Welcome to Meet the Candidates Forum. It's a forum for those running for Columbia Heights City Council. I'm Karen Varian of the NOKA Blaine Coon Rapids Area League of Women Voters, who is sponsoring this Meet the Candidates Forum, along with our co-sponsor, the City of Columbia Heights. I live in Blaine and cannot vote for any of these candidates. All candidates were invited to this event. The League of Women Voters does not support or oppose any political parties or candidates. The League does help citizens become informed voters, and we advocate for important issues. This forum is about informing voters. If you're interested in the League, visit our website, L W V A B C N M dot org. That stands for League of Women Voters, A B C Minnesota dot org. So again, L W V A B C M N dot org. We invite people of all genders and young adults from NOKA County to join our League. We will start with two introductory questions that candidates received in advance, followed by questions submitted by the public via our website, and questions of importance to the League of Women Voters, and will end with closing statements. Answers are limited to 90 seconds for each of the two introductory questions, and one minute for each of the other questions. There are two open at-large council positions. The candidates are Rachel James, John Mershen, Nick Nowitzki, and Justice Briggs. You will be voting for up to two of those candidates. Welcome. Let's begin with the introductory questions. Candidates drew lots to determine who would start first, and after that, we'll rotate who will respond first. Please remind me if I have forgotten anybody. For the most part, I'll repeat the question for each candidate, but if you need me to repeat a question again, please ask. So, we will start with John Mershen. So what is your motivation to run for this office, and what experience or knowledge would help you serve effectively?
Okay, I've lived in Columbia Heights my whole life, graduated in '74 from Columbia Heights High School, worked for the city for 38 years before I retired in 2014. Then I ran for city council, and I've been on the council since 2015. And I'm with the Lions Club. I try to do my best to listen to the citizens of Columbia Heights. I love Columbia Heights. I've been here my whole life, and I really appreciate all the time that the residents talk to me and I answer their questions, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks. Rachel James, what is your motivation for running for this office, and what experience or knowledge would you help serve, will help you serve effectively?
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum, and for those watching it in person. I'm Rachel James, running for city council here in Columbia Heights. I have been living here in Columbia Heights for the past 12 years with my husband. We are raising our two children here, and I just love living in this small town in the big city. It has been a fantastic place to volunteer, to be connected, and to serve. My background is I have a bachelor's in business administration and urban studies, and a master's degree in community ministry leadership. I work at First Lutheran Church, Columbia Heights, as the Director of Children, Youth, and Family Ministry for the past nine years. And I've been serving here in the city for the last six years on the Multicultural Advisory Commission to the Columbia Heights Police Department, in which I help our police connect with diverse communities. And I'm serving my second term on the Parks and Recreation Commission, I'm a Girl Scout leader, and I just love to serve the people here in Columbia Heights. And I've been asked to run, so my motivation is to take my career of making children, youth, and families my career, and make this city a better future, more sustainable, and just for them. Thank you.
Nick Nowitzki, what is your motivation to run for this office, and what experience or knowledge would help you serve effectively?
Thank you for hosting the League of Women Voters. My motivation would be that I love to serve the community, and I love the community. Me and my wife have chose to raise our daughters here. Right now, I have a 13- and a 15-year-old, so I'm very highly involved with the school, with their programs such as sports and encore. Some more experience that I have would be I'm with multiple community groups such as the Athletic Boosters, Kiwanis, and Lions, have served on the Board of Lions, have had a few commission spots, Park and Rec, I'm the current library liaison and the school liaison. And I feel that that gives me a pretty good feeling for what's going on in the city, and the different perspectives and viewpoints of the different generations, really, that are in our community. Thanks.
Thanks. All right, Justice Briggs, what is your motivation to run for this office, and what experience or knowledge would help you serve effectively?
Well, first, thanks to the League of Women Voters for holding this forum, and for all the residents tuning in tonight and watching later on YouTube. My name is Justice Briggs, and I'm a husband, dad, and fourth-year medical student at the University of Minnesota. I grew up in a family of teachers, and for the longest time, thought I was going to be a teacher as well. But when I decided, or I found out I could combine my passion for science and love of teaching, I decided to go to medical school and become a physician. I never envisioned myself as someone who would run for public office, but I got the motivation to do so from taking care of the patients I've seen. In the clinic and the hospital, we have the ability to manage many complex issues, but often, we're only treating part of the problem. Many of these patients live in situations that negatively impact their health, like lack of affordable housing, poor public transportation, unsafe neighborhoods to navigate, and inadequate access to good-paying local jobs. A lot of these issues lie in intentional policies that have left people behind. My wife and I were looking all over the metro for our first house, and we decided to buy our first home in Columbia Heights, where we have fallen in love now and are raising our first child. We haven't just fallen in love with the house, but with the location, the people, and the uniqueness of Heights. We love so much about the city, but at the same time, saw so many of those who are struggling and being left behind. Many of our residents are facing the same issues that many of my patients face, and seeing them in my hometown, I felt the need to step up and make a change in the city, to make their lives easier, not harder. My extensive training in medicine, science, and public health have prepared me well to serve the people of Columbia Heights, as it is rooted in listening, working collaboratively as a team, and finding creative solutions to complex problems.
For those in the audience, that's the timekeeper. So, the second question to Candidate James, what are your goals for the future of Columbia Heights?
First goal is to increase the livability of our city. We want this to be a fantastic place for people to come and live and stay here through generations, and to move here. We have some wonderful parks in our city. Let's fully fund those parks, so that we can keep them maintained, as well as improve access and usability. You can count on me to vote for soccer fields and skate parks, and just to make sure that our parks continue to add to our trails and our sidewalks, to add to our quality of life. Secondly is our business development. We need to make the economic climate of Columbia Heights competitive to the surrounding communities. We need smart new development that brings in business revenue to our city, which helps lower the tax burden for our family residents. And thirdly, we need a transportation infrastructure update. Central Avenue needs to be, we need to work with Minnesota Department of Transportation to make it safer, more beautiful. You can count on me to vote for expanded public infrastructure. To reach these goals, I have partnered with several organizations for endorsement. I am proud to be endorsed by the Minneapolis Regional Labor Federation, AFL-CIO, so I'm a union endorsed, to work with our largest employers in the city. I'm also endorsed by Women Winning for Pro-Choice Women, and by Stonewall DFL, the LBGTQ Caucus of our city, of our party. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Nowitzki, what are your goals for the future of Columbia Heights?
My goals would be to continue to make it the city a welcoming, efficient experience for everyone that chooses to live here with their families. Since being on council, we have made many changes in the communications, in adding outreach programs. I have asked for specific funding for the parks a couple of years ago, because there was not a funding for parks. I believe everyone wants new things for the parks, but for years, there was no funding for it. Thankfully, when I proposed it, the council agreed, and now, we do have it in the budget as a yearly line item. And to continue to make businesses feel welcome, to improve the facade improvement program, we've just added the fire sprinkler program to help new businesses come in and developments make the most of our city, so, just to continue to do that, and then also improve the infrastructure, so that we're ready for these new developments, and ready for new businesses and residents. Thank you.
Thanks. Candidate Briggs, what are your goals for the future of the City of Columbia Heights?
I'd like to break this question down into two parts, both short-term and long-term. For short-term, we should be taking any actions and measures that can quickly improve the lives of our residents. Things such as making key investments in our parks, adding things such as soccer fields and skate parks, which have long been requested, building a dedicated recreation center, investing in an arts program, and adding sidewalks are things that the city can do to better the lives of the people who live here. Another thing that we can do in the short-term is look at different outdated ordinances that are making people's lives harder, and how we can either reform those or repeal those. Another short-term goal of mine is to increase the transparency, responsiveness, and accessibility to the city council. As one of my main motivations for running for city council stemmed from being vocal about issues that were important to me, but not receiving responses from some council members after contacting them. And I believe that's a core principle of being a city council member, is listening to your constituents and responding to their questions and concerns. Long-term goals, I want to create a Columbia Heights that allows everyone to thrive. I'd like to make Columbia Heights a destination city where people from all over the metro want to come to play, work, live, eat, and thrive. Things to do this include redeveloping Central Avenue into a Main Street for Columbia Heights, bringing new businesses that create local jobs for the residents of our city, fostering strong partnerships between our city council and schools, bringing back a dedicated medical clinic to Columbia Heights, and improving the transportation infrastructure in the city, so that people can safely navigate Heights and enjoy all it has to offer. And over time, with these things, we can create an atmosphere where all feel welcome to work, live, and play.
Candidate Mershen, what are your goals for the future of Columbia Heights?
My goals for the future of Columbia Heights is making Central Avenue a safer spot for residents walking, and getting, hopefully, I'm around to help figure out what we're going to be doing to the new parks, hopefully get some parks with, for handicap accessibility, for handicapped kids to play on. And the infrastructure in Columbia Heights, we're working on that, we're doing a good job at it. And making, trying to keep the taxes as low as possible that we can, so we can still function, but still work with the citizens on the tax rate, tax base. And I'm looking forward to all the new, with the new city hall, the new, once Public Works gets going, and once they start doing the rehab on Mershen Hall there, it'll be interesting to see, hopefully, I'll be there to help push them in the right direction for when we get everything rolling. That's all I have.
Thank you. Now we'll go to the questions we received from the public via our website. We received many good questions, and we will not have time to ask them all. I have questions sorted by categories: general, development, city regulations, city services, finances, and budget, community involvement, safety and diversity, equity. So that's a lot of them. First one I'm going to try to do is go through those categories, and at least ask one question in all of them, and then I'll come back as time allows and ask more questions. So, the first question is, many mayoral and council responsibilities, I'll change that, many council responsibilities include meetings, sessions, and events that are not pre-scheduled. How will your professional and family commitments affect your attendance? And this question goes to Candidate Nowitzki.
Thank you. Yes, I would agree that there's a lot that comes up when you're on council. I am a small business owner in the city, so that does give me great flexibility to put city first, if needed, and be able to make the surprise meetings or commissions, or even help fill in for a different one if a different council or mayor is absent for that one.
Thanks. Justice Briggs, that question is, many council responsibilities include meetings, sessions, and events that are not pre-scheduled. How will your professional and family commitments affect your attendance?
Absolutely, and I think that running a successful campaign is definitely a very time-consuming one, and it has been a learning process of how to manage and balance both family, professional, and campaign-related activities. But regardless of that, I have been able to attend many commission meetings, almost all of the city council meetings, and also run a successful campaign where I came in second in the primary. And to look at other physicians who have run for offices as well, there are many at the state level who have run for both state representative and state senators, who have successfully been able to manage their medical practice while also serving. And additionally to that, there is a current physician running for governor of Minnesota, and I can't imagine that running for city council and serving those hours is any more time-consuming than that.
Thanks. Candidate Mershen.
Being retired, I can show up to every special meeting, any work session that we have, or if there's a special event, that being retired, that I can come and go. I'm bar manager at the VFW, which I do my own hours, so they've been working good with me the last two years, so it's no problem for me to make any meetings or special sessions that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate James, many council responsibility include meetings, sessions, and events that are not pre-scheduled. How will your professional and family commitments affect your attendance?
I've been at every event that I can possibly make it to in Columbia Heights since I've been here. In fact, I probably go to way more events than I should go to, and I need a little more relaxation time. But in general, I think that the goal of our city should be inclusivity. We need parents, we need working people on the council, we need to make all of our meetings accessible via Zoom and public access. I love the way that the city has open meeting laws, and those require notice if more than two candidates are in one place, so most events do need to be pre-scheduled, and since I have a flexible work-from-home and flexible hour job, I can make those. But I want our city meetings to be accessible, not just to council members, but also to residents, because we work for you. So I would work toward pushing the council toward more accessibility, inclusivity, regardless of my own personal job.
Thanks. All right, the next question is, what policy changes do you support to promote, preserve more affordable housing for both renters and homeowners in Columbia Heights? And this question goes to Candidate Briggs first.
And affordable housing is definitely a hot topic, and one that is very important to our city, and it's definitely a complex issue. And we need to balance both that we're living in difficult economic times, and that we need to also have a lot of, wide variety of housing options, the people of different incomes. One thing that has been done by the city council is putting a moratorium on new rentals, and I think that is a step in the direction of coming to a final solution, but it's definitely not the final solution, as that is a way to prevent these corporate landlords from buying our houses, and then doing cheap flips, and then selling for value, and that ends up leaving our residents in a bad place with poor living conditions. However, at the same time, we also don't want to put a blanket rule across the entire city, where maybe someone who is looking for a little bit more income, looking to rent out a room in their house, is also looking to make some money in that way, so we also need to be conscious of that.
Thanks. Candidate Mershen, what policy changes do you support to promote, preserve more affordable housing for both renters and homeowners in Columbia Heights?
Well, one thing I liked is that we did that moratorium on the rental houses, where it's going to be more family occupied, instead of an organization or buying a house and then renting it out, which it shouldn't be that way. It should be more family-oriented, because it's not good for the neighborhood when you got four or five rental properties in one block. So that's my main thing, is doing that, getting that squared away, as long as we got it started. Now, we did a 12-month moratorium, so that we can get it figured out and get it straightened out, so there will be no comeback on the city if we miss words, anything like that, so.
Candidate James.
Affordable housing is the backbone of Columbia Heights. I know that's how I ended up moving here, is because it was a great place to buy a first home. And many people that I've spoke to, as I've been door-knocking, have brought up that they appreciate the home prices being affordable here. And this is our history as a city. Hard-working people have come here to buy property and to rent, so our city needs to do everything we can to maintain that. Unfortunately, because our housing stock is a little bit older, it becomes an investment target for multinational corporations. They see prices here lower, and they can keep the same rents as elsewhere, so they buy up stock. I support the 12-month moratorium on new rental conversions, and I'm looking for solutions similar to things that have been done in neighboring cities. Furly recently enacted an ordinance allowing every homeowner that has a homestead to do an accessory dwelling unit if they choose, or a mother-in-law suite, that would be an option. Minneapolis has a land trust program whereby homes that aren't eligible for HUD are able to be sold, rehabbed by the city, and then the city can sell it to another eligible homeowner. Anything that we can do to maintain our low prices. Thank you.
Candidate Nowitzki.
Affordable housing is a much-needed entity in this city. I voted for a couple affordable housing developments, and I do support the moratorium on the new single-family home rentals. I don't want people to think that it's all rentals that are banned, but rather, keep the single-family homes more available for new couples and families. It's one of the best ways for anybody to generate wealth and to get ahead of the game. When we have these corporations taking over the houses and not giving that opportunity to our residents, that hurts everybody in the long run. So I would, I do support the moratorium, and look forward to the discussion on how we can make it a permanent one, so, thank you.
Thanks. Candidate Mershen, next question is, now that we've not only not gotten a grocery store in the old Rainbow Foods building, but also our longtime friendly neighborhood hardware store is closing in the same building, what new initiatives do you hope to implement for local economic development and community vitality, and more specifically, too, what are your plans for getting an affordable grocery store in Columbia Heights?
Well, right now, we're working on getting more, at that site there, there's an outfit that's bought the site, and they're working on, right now, getting all the plans together. And they said there's going to be, supposed to be a grocery store coming in, but they're not telling us yet, because they want to get all their plans and everything all put together, and trying to get more small businesses in the Columbia Heights, like Ace Hardware or some, any kind of little hardware store, or a nice little grocery store like it used to be years ago, and every time you turn around on a corner, you found a nice little Ma &amp; Pop grocery store, or, you know, something like that. So, we're working on it, it's just that we're waiting for the plans to come back, to see what grocery store will be going in there, or should be going in there, like they told us, so, that's all I have.
Candidate James, what new initiatives do you hope to implement for local economic development and community vitality, including an affordable grocery store in Columbia Heights?
Thank you. You know, the site at the old Rainbow Building has sat empty for far too long, and I'm very excited for the new At-Lattice development that will be there, which will include up to 500 new units, a 30,000-square-foot key retailer, which has been in contract with a grocer, like council member Mershen said, they hope to announce that soon, and 12 to 15 storefronts. I've been attending the Columbia Heights Business Council, and meeting individually with business owners on Central, including two owners who are saying that when those storefronts open, they are very excited to move their business into a new building where there is more people, potential customers. And so I would support holding developers accountable to their TIF funding, the city sets aside that, and making sure the timelines that we give them tax breaks for are followed, so that it doesn't linger and become blighted.
Thanks. Candidate Nowitzki, what new initiatives do you hope to implement for the local economic development and community vitality, including an affordable grocery store?
I would like to keep adding to the programs such as the facade improvement, the sprinkler system program, to attract the new businesses and help them out when they do get here. As far as the grocery store site goes, I know that there is plans in development, we have not seen them yet, but it is supposed to include a grocery store and other retail. Until then, we can keep doing the programs like facade, or the community-based cleanups that help show that the community supports not only the businesses, but a clean central university and clean businesses as well. Thanks.
Candidate Briggs.
So I think a lot of our talk about small business revolves around both 40th Avenue and Central, as those are two main business right-of-ways, and we need to, one, work with MINDOT, to make sure we are creating a space that is both pedestrian-friendly, biker-friendly, and also is accessible to cars, and most importantly, accessible to our businesses there. Because the more welcoming it is for the people that are traveling there, the more likely they are to shop there as well, not only from the people in Columbia Heights, but people who may be traveling through as well. I think another thing that I would like to do to promote small businesses is starting a citywide catalog of foods, goods, and services that are in Columbia Heights. I think that would be a great way to promote all of the different businesses in Columbia Heights, and send that out to every resident. And then in terms of a grocery store, I think we need to continue advocating to get what people have said they wanted for a long time, and getting an affordable grocery store in Columbia Heights on our main road.
Thank you. Okay, the next question goes to Candidate James, and I'm going into city regulations now. So how do you propose updating the current parking restrictions to meet residents' needs better? Things such as overnight parking regulations, exception permitting structure, none of parking spaces in some of the parks, overflowing traffic into residential neighborhoods.
Thank you so much. Columbia Heights has, starting with the winter parking ban, we have great clean streets. I want to start by thanking the Public Works, they do a fantastic job of clearing the streets when it snows. But the current five-month ban on overnight parking does not meet the needs of all of our citizens. It's not working for everyone in our city. As I'm looking at city regulations and ordinances, I'm looking at everything through an equity lens. How does this impact all of our community, renters, seniors, people that have difficulty moving their cars? So I think we need to tweak that ordinance to make it snowfall-based, rather than just months of the year. I think we need to be creative with other parking options. We have municipal ramps, including the one on 40th and Central, we need to make that available. And we also need to hold our landlords accountable for providing the required parking spaces, which are not always there right now, and renters sometimes have no place to live. I also support redeveloping our parks to include more access to public transportation, bike lanes, and parking spaces. Thank you.
Candidate Nowitzki.
Okay, the parking regulations, we'll start with the winter ban overnight. I do agree with that. It has been brought up, I believe, every year that I've been on council. And the fact that it's public safety and walkability is the main driving factor on why I support having the ban. We don't have sidewalks on all of our city streets, and so it would be really hard for people to get around if, when the snow flies, that it doesn't get cleared right away. I do not support going to the snow emergency-type ban, because it is a hardship when their cars get towed and impounded, and we don't need our residents to have to go through that. Another part would be the rental inspections should include parking, and making sure that there's enough parking for the number of people that are renting in the single-family homes, in the duplexes, to avoid any confusion in the winter when the new residents don't know about it sometimes, and to give them the options that they should have for the off-street parking.
Thanks. Candidate Briggs.
So I agree with Rachel that the parking ban is definitely an equity issue, in terms of it being fair to everyone in the city, especially when we talk about renters who are able to apply for parking permits but are automatically denied in our current structure. I think in an ideal world, we would have no street parking at all, but the reality is, is that Columbia Heights was built when the single-car family was a reality, and many houses, including my own, only have room for one, maybe two cars, in their driveway if you're lucky. I think with a lot of the issues we have in Columbia Heights, we need to get creative with how we're going to solve those. And a couple ideas that I specifically have is, an easy one is to move the parking ban, if it were to stay in place, from November 1st to December 1st, as the amount of snowfall in that timeframe is minuscule if we look back at the data. The second, I think we need to look at those ordinances, that ban things such as parking on gravel, if people want to add spaces to park in. And additionally, I think the city should look at different grants and initiatives to help people. and initiatives to help people add parking spaces as they have done so with adding concrete for trash bins and whatnot.
Thank you. Candidate Merson.
As for that winter parking, I plowed the streets for quite a few years before we started the parking ban. And it, it worked better because when that snow dropped, the people didn't get their cars off in time, and then they got tagged and towed. And once we put the parking ban into effect, they know that they gotta be off the streets from November to March, or April, one of the two. But they, it, it worked out good because the streets were plowed good, and we didn't have to go around cars. We had more complaints when we didn't get, we couldn't go through it, and we had more complaints because how come my street wasn't plowed? Then once we put in that parking ban, everything, we never had those complaints or anything anymore. So I'd like to keep the parking ban the same way as, as it is now because it works the best for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. So the next question I have, actually, I am going to move into city services here. In Anoka County, Columbia Heights has the lowest number of households with internet access. What can the city do to increase affordable internet access for everyone, including students in Columbia Heights? And this goes to candidate Nowitzki first.
What can the city do? I guess, we don't provide it as a city service, so we could definitely work with the different companies and see what they could offer. Make sure that our infrastructure is prepared and ready for any upgrades that they may bring for the new service. But yeah, currently, we have not discussed, and I would not want internet to be considered a city utility and another required payment that the residents or homeowners would have to have.
Candidate Spriggs, what can the city do to increase affordable internet access?
I do think the city should look at adding, at least look at the possibility and how much it would cost to add broadband as a utility because throughout the pandemic, we've learned about how vital it is to have, not only have internet access, but have reliable internet access, whether it's school, work-related, or other things that many people need to do, whether it's grocery shopping, looking for other things like that. The internet is a vital thing to, to be productive and be active in the 21st century. So I think that is definitely something we should look at.
Thanks. Candidate Merson, what do, what can the city do to increase affordable internet access?
I guess we can try working with the different companies, but I don't know what it'd cost the city. It'd probably cost us an arm and a leg just to get our own internet company through the city of Columbia Heights. Because I know internet, everybody's just, everything's going up and up and up, you know? So it's kind of hard to work with a company when you can't even find a company that wants to work with you that'll help you find a decent price for anything right now. It's just, just really tough. So I mean, we can try looking into it, see what happens, but that's about all I could, you know, come up with a good answer is we'll do our best to try to find something, see if we can get a rate going. Thank you.
Thanks. Candidate James, what can the city do to increase affordable internet access?
I agree with candidate Spriggs that internet is vital in this time. There are many resources out there already providing affordable and low-cost internet, but the barrier is really knowledge and access to that communication. The community action partnerships in our area provide low-cost internet for seniors, for residents with income below a certain level, and for students. I know the city of, I mean, the school district of Columbia Heights works closely with those families during the pandemic and ongoing to make sure that they have the devices as well as the hotspots that they need to work from home. I just got my parents set up with low $10 a month internet in their home, not in Columbia Heights, but the same program is available to others in the city. And our role in the city can be to use our communication platforms and connections to make sure that all the residents have access to those programs.
Thank you. I am going to move on to finances and budget. So we'll start with candidate Spriggs, and the question is, if elected, what steps would you take to put our city on a firmer financial footing?
I think this is twofold in terms of what we can do. One is to, to look at those new housing units we are bringing in because those are going to end up bringing us an increase in our tax base that we can rely on to invest in vital city projects and whatnot. And additionally, with that, it, falling on its heels is also bringing in new business developments as well because that also is going to provide us a bigger tax base. And also with, with the increase in foot traffic on Central Avenue specifically because that's where our main business hub is. With more units there, they are going to also see more business as well. I think that in terms of what we need to do is we need to bring new ideas into the city because we do have a lot of projects that are, are needing to be completed. And those obviously do cost money, but it is based off of a lot of years of not investing in our vital infrastructure in the city. So we need to be cognizant of what we're doing to bring more money into the city so we can fix up the current projects that we have.
Thank you. Candidate Merson, if elected, what steps would you take to put our city on a firmer financial footing?
Probably, you know, get more businesses in Columbia Heights so it's easier on the taxpayers because you can't really, with the COVID and stuff, you really can't raise the taxes to get more money for the city. So it'd be more like going for more grant programs, working with Anoka County, see what grant programs are out there so we can help save money and, you know, put the money towards whatever, like for the parks or for any kind of infrastructure rehab, like sewer and water, where we got grants for that. So it wouldn't cost the city so much money, state aid, you know, roads and stuff. So it'd be more like getting more grant money in so we can get a, save a little bit of money and put it towards something, something else down the road once we get the money built up.
Thanks. Candidate James, if elected, what steps would you take to put the city on a firmer financial footing?
I agree that our city development office has done a fantastic job seeking grants. We've received many grants, and we do receive a significant amount of local government aid, but that is going down each year. We have depended upon that in our budget, and we have not invested. So now a lot of the bills from the last 40 years are coming due. We've got a public works building that needs to be repaired and replaced. As community center, we have big projects that we now need to pay for, and we can't depend on that state funding that we've had in the past. So what we need to do is to create a strategic tax plan for the next five years, 10 years, and 20 years about the renovations that are coming due. Right now, we're left with a bill from things that hadn't gotten funded in the past. And I would say that we need to take the repairs that need to be done now so that we don't kick that can down the road for future generations. And that will create a firmer financial footing so that when businesses come into the town, they know that we've invested first in our infrastructure so that they can make a profit here in the city.
Thanks. And candidate Nowitzki, what steps would you take to put our city on a firmer financial footing?
I would continue with the steps the city is currently taking. We are in a pretty good financial spot as a city. We get A ratings from our, the creditors and auditors that, in fact, our finance department wins awards because of it. And we have, over the last years that I've been on, every year, we are actually going away from relying on the local government aid for our city services and our everyday functions, but rather using that for the capital. So we are on that path, and I would definitely keep us on that path because the city needs to be in good financial standing for developments and businesses to want to come here and know that we know how to take care of our infrastructure and services.
All right. The next question is, I'm kind of going in the category of safety now. Data shows that residents of color experience a higher percentage of police interactions and violence than white residents. What is your stance on local police reform regarding keeping Black, Asians, Latino, Native, and other historically marginalized groups of people safe in our community? The question goes to candidate Merson first.
Oh, right now, we're, with the police department, we're giving them all, all training for diversity and how to handle mental health situations. And the main, and we've been, the Columbia Heights Police Department has been doing a really good job because we've been pushing the training for them. If you don't train them on what kind of different situations they get into, then it's, it's not going to work. So we've been doing most, you know, the training's been working fantastic over the last quite a few years now. I can't remember when we started it, but it's been quite a few years. And I give kudos out to our police department because they've been handling themselves good. I've done many ride-alongs, and they've, in all kinds of different situations, and they handled themselves very professionally. So the more training you give them, the better off the whole city's going to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate James, what is your stance on local police reform regarding keeping historically marginalized groups of people safe in our community?
I have been volunteering in depth with the police department for the last six years because I care so much about this issue on the Multicultural Advisory Commission. We do have excellent police force here in Columbia Heights. They have won national awards on community policing. I would also support a new program of citizens oversight committee. We have an advisory committee now, and a citizens oversight committee allows members from diverse communities to have an opportunity to look at incidences through the eyes of equity and to bring recommendations to the police force. We have an opportunity to hire people within our departments from a diverse background. The great thing about the Columbia Heights Police Department is that they do prioritize that. They work hard to make sure that they are hiring women, people from different countries, people from different ethnic backgrounds. And I think we need to take that same equity lens into all of our city hiring. Thank you.
Candidate Nowitzki, what is your stance on local police reform regarding historically marginalized groups of people, keeping them safe in our community?
Since I have been on council, my stance has always been to keep the police well-funded so that resources, training, and equipment is available and they are trained on it when needed. I was happy to vote for not one, but two social workers to be on our police force. We now have a first shift and a second shift. And our force is really years, if not a decade, ahead of most other police departments in their community policing and their community interactions. We have this great school liaison officers. They hold weekly basketball with the high school, and I mean, the turnout's like 60 to 70 kids. You can walk around the school, all the kids know the resource officer. So I think we are doing a great job, and I would continue to give them the funding and support that's needed and not take that away from them.
Thank you. Candidates Spriggs, what is your stance on local police reform regarding historically marginalized groups of people, keeping them safe in our community?
I think that's something that we always need to have on the forefront of our minds. I mean, always need to be thinking about how we can do better because when we're dealing with this issue, we're not only dealing with years, but decades of, of trauma in these communities. I think the citizens oversight committee is a great idea to, to give more power to the people who live here to, to know what's going on with their police department and have a say in what's going on. I think our police department has prioritized diversity and equity and has gotten awards for, for that. And I think that they should definitely include that. But I think at the forefront is, is reaching out to these communities and really trying to form a bond and trust is, is something we need to look at. Another thing that I think has been a great implementation and we need to continue to have and improve and, and utilize as much as we can is, is the social workers who have been added to the police department in terms of helping people with mental health crises. And additionally, I think we should be working with the Anoka County attorney as well to see what ordinances and offenses they are prosecuting and what things we can do better from an equity standpoint.
Thank you. The next question is, do you support changing city council seats from being elected at large to being elected by ward to promote greater diversity and more equitable representation on our city council? Why or why not? And this goes to candidate James.
I support the Columbia Heights council seats continuing to be at large. I do think that we can work on diversity and equity in our city. When I was considering running for city council, my first thought was we need more people of color and leadership. So I'm a white woman, why should I run? So I went to leaders that I respect, and I asked them to run. And they said, no, I don't feel like this is a safe place for me to serve. And that, we've seen that recently, that people have not felt safe here. We also have a system whereby volunteers get to serve on our advisory boards and commissions, and they're appointed by the city council. I believe that we need to diversify those boards and commissions. We've seen amazing qualified candidates be passed over for other people who are friends, or neighbors, or relatives of people who are already on the boards. And we can increase our diversity through that process and making our city council reflect our community. Thank you.
Candidate Nowitzki, do you support changing the city council seats from being elected at large to being elected by ward?
I believe that we should be at large, like it currently is. I represent the whole city. I would hope any resident, it wouldn't matter where, location, could come talk to me. I would not want a ward to think, oh, well, you're a council, but you're not my councilperson. So, and really, the council, we cover a pretty good area. If you look at where we're all living, we're in different sections of the city currently because this was looked at a couple of years ago as well. And as far as the boards and commissions go, like Rachel was saying, I fully supported when we took the, basically, life term away from the positions a couple of years ago and created. Now, everybody has to interview, and we do tremendous outreach to try to get candidates to come in and interview. And over the last two years, have seen an increase. And that allows everybody to come out and apply, but only one or two can get on there when the spots are open, unfortunately.
Thanks. Candidates Spriggs, do you support changing city council seats from being elected at large to being elected by ward?
I support the current system where we are four at-large seats. I think, as Councilmember Nowitzki said, it's important, especially in a city of our size where it is 20,000, but it is a small enough city where it is important that each council member represents every person in the city. I think something that the city should focus on instead, as Ms. James had talked about, is increasing our diversity and inclusion in terms of our board commissions and also in terms of being welcoming to different candidates who are stepping up. For example, we've only had one person of color elected in the city's 102-year history. And I think a lot of that is because of the years of an unwelcoming culture that has been present in Columbia Heights. And I think that is something that we need to not only recognize but be intentional about to try to change that.
Thank you. I'm going to go back into some other categories again here and ask some questions. What, if any, changes might you consider to city code regarding out-of-state interests purchasing single-family homes in Columbia Heights and using them as rental property? This goes to candidate Nowitzki first.
Well, we just did the moratorium on the single-family rental houses. So, I mean, I don't support out-of-state corporations coming in, buying the houses in our city, and taking that opportunity away from residents. Thanks.
Thanks. Then candidate Spriggs, what is your position on any changes that you might consider to city code regarding out-of-state interests purchasing single-family homes and using them as rental properties?
I agree with that. If there are out-of-state companies and landlords, large corporations specifically, who are coming into Columbia Heights and buying up our, our houses, they are not invested in our community and have no reason to, to maintain these properties to give the, our residents a good standard of living. I do think the, the current moratorium is a step in the right direction, like I said earlier. However, I'd like to see if we can make that as nuanced as possible to not disadvantage people who are living in their homes and looking for possible other sources of income as well in terms of renting out maybe a bedroom or two in their own house that they're still living in.
Thanks. And then candidate Merson.
I totally agree with the rest of the candidates that it should be, we shouldn't let out-of-state companies buy the houses because we've seen when they do buy the houses, they don't maintain them. They just go downhill, and all we get is neighbors' complaints on them because they're so terrible, and police calls on them because they just rent them out to anybody. Half of them, I know, don't do background checks on any of them. So I, I support, like the rest of the candidates, that no, it's not feasible to let out-of-state companies buy houses. It's more for single families to get and own their own house, as long as, because you like a family neighborhood. You don't like renters, you know, that, or not, I didn't say renters. That, that came out wrong. I don't like companies buying the houses and renting them out. And then it just, there's just too much rental houses in Columbia Heights right now. That's why I voted for that moratorium. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. I think we have time for at least one more. I think we have time for at least one more question here.
I'll answer that one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No problem. Within the legal bounds, I heard the city attorney say that there is some difficulty in distinguishing between different kinds of buyers, but if it is at all legally possible, I definitely agree with all of the other candidates that we would rather not have out-of-state corporate landlords. I will say that the city has the power to grant and deny rental licenses. That's our power. And I would support making sure that our renting stock is very high-quality while at the same time also looking to see how can our city support our citizens who are renters. I advocated for, we have a whole section on our website supporting homeowners, but there isn't anything supporting renters, where they can get their resources, what the laws are. We need to have both. I moved into the city first as a renter, right out of master school, and loved it and wanted to buy my first home here, and I think our city can look for doing that, and supporting having local ownership will definitely help that. Thank you.
Thank you. As I've said, this is our last question here, and I hope you find it a little bit fun. But if the city received a $2 million grant to use for the city any way it wanted, what would you do with it and why? So that goes first to candidate Spriggs.
It's a tough question. I wish that was true.
I was going to change the amount maybe more. I don't know if 2 million is that great of an amount.
As much as you'd give us. I think one thing we should look at is investing in our parks, I think, because it's definitely a thing that's on the forefront of people's minds in terms of not only getting our parks up to the standard, but also investing in them and getting new types of parks in. For example, I believe it's Shoreview just opened a new ADA-accessible playground where it is a very wide, very vast playground for kids of all ages where they can go and play. And not only is that a great community site for them, but it's also driving people from all over the metro area to go to Shoreview and not only use that, but use their businesses and come back to the city over and over again. So I think that's something that's not only good for our city in terms of the residents who live here, but is a way to help our small businesses and all of our retailers in the city as well.
Thank you. Candidate Merzen.
Well, I'd like to, if we did get that kind of money, which is wishful thinking, but, you know, it'd be, for me, I'd put it towards whatever projects that we got on the burner. If we did get that money and split it out equally so we can get more projects done with that amount of money, instead of just putting it on one project, just spread it out so we can get more projects done in a faster amount of time. Thank you.
Candidate James.
This would be so amazing. I would really just want to blow it all in a fantastic new community center, and 2 million is just a drop in the bucket on that. I would love a pool, I would love a playground attached to that skate park. Probably the most fiscally responsible thing to do would be to invest that into our upcoming bonding because the city will need to put in a good amount of money, and then that capital could help us raise a lot more capital and not impact our daily, our regular budget. Thank you.
Candidate Nowitzki.
I would invest in infrastructure because if we were just given $2 million magically, that would be wonderful. I would want to invest in more of the sewer projects and the stuff that residents don't see, but they do expect it to be done that hasn't been done over the decades. That way, when we have to go to the residents for bonds or raising taxes, we, it's not for infrastructure, but rather the fun things like the parks. We need to do what we need to get done first before our wants. I mean, I've wanted all-accessible parks for six years since I've been here. I've asked for the skate park, I've asked for other parks too, but it's the funding. And we can't ask the residents to fund what we want when we have so many needs. So a really short answer would be infrastructure and take care of the needs of the city with that.
Thanks. Now it's time for your closing remarks, and we'll start with candidate Merzen.
I'd just like to thank you for having us tonight, and just to let you know that if you vote for me, I promise I'll be like I've been for the last two terms, that you call, I'll answer the phone, because I love Columbia Heights, I grew up here, grew up my children here and stuff, so I just love this community so much, that's why I decided to run for a third term. So just hopefully everything goes good and I get re-elected. Thank you.
Candidate James.
Thank you again to the League of Women Voters for hosting these forums and to all the engaged citizens in Columbia Heights. It's been so wonderful being out in the community, door-knocking and going to events and meeting people. I'm so lucky to live here. All the answers tonight only scratched the surface, so if you have any questions, please visit rachelforheights.com or all the socia ls, or you can email or call me. I'd love to talk with you about what's important to you. If elected, you can count on me to stand up for your First Amendment rights to protest. You can count on me to support our LGBTQ communities. You can count on me to make sure that women's rights are respected in Columbia Heights. You can count on me to look at all of our taxation through an equity lens and how does this impact all the people of our city? And you can count on me to be transparent and accountable. I think that respect and accountability are needed in our local government. Thank you.
Candidate Nowitzki.
Thank you. If elected to another term, I will continue to represent everyone. I am nonpartisan. I don't believe that this position should be backed by any party because it takes people that aren't affiliated with that party away from thinking that you'll represent them. I will continue to ask the clarifying questions that is needed. I will continue to put infrastructure first and the city's needs first so that our wants can come and we'll be ready for them, such as the parks. I know that's a huge topic right now, and thankfully, the city is in a good spot to where we can go and ask the residents for a bond because we have improved other aspects of the city with our infrastructure and our capital to where we can now fiscally ask for that and know that we're in good shape. Thanks.
Candidate Spriggs.
First, thank the League of Women Voters for holding this tonight and allowing us all to share our different visions for the city. I decided to run for office because when I looked at the city, I felt like there needed to be a new sense of urgency in Columbia Heights to make it better for everyone. The people of Columbia Heights are facing many different issues, and they are craving new leadership that will tackle these problems head-on with creativity, community, or communication and compassion, and we, as a city, must create a city where every resident feels supported. I'll bring a fresh, diverse perspective to City Hall where I'll represent all the people of Columbia Heights, and I will be the, if elected, be the second person of color ever elected in Columbia Heights. Additionally, my medical education has provided me a strong training in medicine, science, and public health that has prepared me well to tackle difficult challenges that the city might face. And additionally, I ask you, as you're driving around the city and taking a look at the campaign season we're in, I just ask that you look at whose values are being represented with who and ask what vision you'd like to see for the city going forward.
Thank you. And thank you to our candidates tonight for speaking to voters about issues and running in the election for Columbia Heights City Council. Thanks to our co-sponsors, the city of Columbia Heights, for their video production and promotion. And thanks, viewers, for your interest in becoming informed voters. The links to all the League of Women Voters ABC Local Election Candidates forms can be found on our website at l w v a b c m n dot org. Please get in touch with the candidates directly if you have questions left unanswered by this form. There are a lot of races on this year's ballot, and redistricting has taken place. To preview what will be on your ballot, visit the Secretary of State's Minnesota Votes website at m n votes dot gov. This site also provides information on where to vote. Again, that is Minnesota Votes, it's m n v o t e s dot gov. You can register to vote or update your registration at that same website, m n votes dot gov. You can also register in person on Election Day. When you vote, you participate in our democracy, you make it stronger, and you make it yours. You can vote early, in person, or by mail, starting this Friday, September 23rd, or you can vote in person on Election Day on November 8th. Columbia Heights residents can vote early, in person, at City Hall or the Anoka County Government Center. Visit their websites for the hours that they're open. Thanks. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Grace John, always keeping it so professional and respectful. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.